Well, a meeting of the Planning Commission for Wednesday, November 14th. I'm here at the Goodyear City Council or Planning Commission headquarters. And I'd like to ask everybody to stand and join me in the conference room.
(inaudible) United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Commissioner. (inaudible). 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 Okay. Let the record show that there are four commissioners present. And anything that we do tonight needs to be a unanimous vote for it to pass. If there, we will, in a minute, we will do public comments. There are public comment cards outside of the desk. If you want to speak on any item that's on tonight's agenda or anything that's not on tonight's agenda, you need to fill out one of these cards and please bring it up to me. I have some already. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item of business is the minutes. I'd like to request a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on October 17th, 2007.
(inaudible). I'll say that.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Chairman DeBrocker, and a second from Commissioner Williams. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. I ask for public comments. At this point in the session, if anybody would like to make a public comment on something that's not on tonight's agenda, you have an opportunity to do so. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any ex parte communications that the commission needs to report? Commissioner Williams?
None.
None? No ex parte communications. Okay, the next item of business is a presentation by our new Economic Development Director, Harry Paxton. Welcome.
Mr. Commissioner and members of the commission, thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you tonight and to give you a little bit of an update, a little bit of an overview of who we are in economic development, a little bit about our role, just a very brief one, which I know you're pretty familiar with us. And then also a little bit of updates that we would like to, just give you a few of the updates from the economic development side. A little bit on square footage of retail development, which I know you have worked on for many years in the commission in your role. A little bit on redevelopment, a little bit about the airport as well, and then something we're very excited about in economic development, and that's our website that we just recently launched. Get into, let's see if I know how to work this right. There we go. Our mission in the economic development department, really, if you're familiar with us, is to recruit capital investment and enhance existing business opportunities. We're often known, of course, about recruiting new businesses, but it's also about expanding those existing businesses and helping your economy grow that way. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And of course, the expansion of developable land and other investment opportunities to help create that quality of life in our community. Some of the guides that we have, of course, in this commission, as well as the guides from our council, have been provided over the years. And one of the great things about working in this community, and one of the terrific things I was so excited about, was the fact of all the work that's gone into planning this community. So we look, of course, at focused futures two, that strategic plan that was adopted in May of 2002, the Goodyear Employment Corridor that was adopted in May of 2003, and then, of course, the general plan, which is updated and adopted also in 2003. So those are our guides that we look at as we go forward in economic development. I wanted to give you just a brief update of our organization because we're completely staffed right now. In fact, we're also fortunate to have a marketing intern that's helped us tremendously, as well as we've gone through and developed our website. We just recently brought on Paul Zampini as our Senior Development Manager for office and industrial. So we're very pleased with that as we go forward and are able to respond to the needs of this very vibrant and fast-growing community. If you look at our responsibilities, everyone knows that economic development, a huge responsibility is business recruitment. That's usually what's talked about. You know, what's the next business coming? That's the question we usually are asked. So what's coming? And that's a big part of our responsibility, as you are aware. But in addition to that, existing business development, something that doesn't always get the press that possibly it really deserves, in many cases it does deserve a lot more press than what it gets, that's a big part of our mission as well, and I'll talk a little bit about that. In fact, one of the things that probably a lot of those in the business world don't really realize, and to some degree, is that most of the development and growth in jobs really comes from your existing business development factor, or studies that show 75, 80% of that comes from there. And of course, we're also involved in redevelopment in the community and also marketing. In those areas, we'll be growing as we continue to grow as a community, especially, I would say, in the redevelopment realm. You're very aware of how fast we're growing, a very fast and growing community. Looking at the census information from the Forbes Information that came out recently, listing Goodyear as number four fastest growing in the community. From 2000 to 2006, 142.9%, tremendous growth. Let's go to the next slide here. Population protection, you're very familiar with that, how fast we're growing, those upward trends, even a conservative number there showing by 2022, if we only grow at 5%, I think we're well over 100,000 people. And of course, approaching several hundred thousand as we go at 13%, which has been some of our historical growth numbers. One of the things I want to talk a little bit about, to give you an update, and I know you've worked on many of these projects in the past, and that's when the retail square footage that's coming. If you look at the retail square footage that's coming, it's staggering numbers. If we look at just over the next two and a half years, including fiscal year 2008, right now, we're looking at approximately 3.8 million square feet of retail. Over the next five years, over 5 million square feet of retail that's coming. That's tremendous. It shows the vibrant nature of our community, of which many of those projects, I know you have already come through here. We have more that will be coming. But the bulk of that is already planned and is in the works, and many of them are committed, and we're looking forward to that coming forward. One of the things that this commission, of course, if you remember back in 2005, and also the council approved in 2007 and 2005, was the redevelopment plan. The vision that the council had, and this commission had, of course, was, as we bring on all of that tremendous amount of retail, what's the impact it's going to have, and how do we position our older commercial areas to be as vibrant as possible and to revitalize those. Well, one of the things that was done, of course, was this redevelopment plan that was instituted. And then, of course, that one area there that's highlighted on that chart, the facade improvement grant program, that covers the older part of Goodyear here, in the historic area. Those are areas that will have more concentration in our office as we go forward in the future, obviously trying to enhance and improve those areas as much as possible. So on the redevelopment side, there in that corridor, as well as especially in the facade improvement grant area, you'll, from time to time, you may see projects that come before you that are impacted by that, if they need rezoning or other use permits or other information. So look forward to that as those come forward. If we look at our industry targets, and we're talking about base industry here, and basic economic development, and who we target, we really align with what the GPEC targets are, and which are really the state targets, those high value targets that have high wage targets in each of our communities that will significantly impact our economies. We're fortunate to have some representation of these, such as aerospace. High technology and software development and biomedical, those are ones definitely that we target as well as advanced business and financial services. In addition to that, of course, we also have a cluster of the food, fiber, and natural products, and that's important for us. You'll see it's also more focused recruitment in terms of arts and entertainment. Our office will have some of that responsibility. And then, of course, with City Center coming onboard, with Ballpark Village, that's also a part of our role. And of course, upscale restaurants, specialty retail, and full-service hotels. Those are some of the things that we see that in terms of, on the retail side, as well as what our targets are, that you possibly could be seeing coming before you. Some obviously will come sooner, especially those on the retail side. But we hope to bring some great employment development, too, to this community, such as what has happened with CTCI, and of course, what Macy's is doing as well. If you look at that chart, they're our largest employers, and I mentioned earlier about those existing employers in your community. One of the things that we do in our department is what we call business retention and expansion, ensuring that we work with existing employers in our community to provide them with the best opportunities to grow. If you look at Lockheed there, that's a really neat example of a company that five years ago was at 500. Probably a lot of people in the community may not realize that. Today, they're over 800. And so we're fortunate to have that. That's a good example of a company that's grown, continues to grow, and that's one of our focuses. Also, of course, is the new companies that are coming onboard, and this is a great example of recruitment. And we're very pleased, as far as everyone is in the community, with the fact that those are going to move to the top of that list, so to speak, with the hundreds of jobs that they're bringing, with cancer treatment centers and Macy's coming onboard. Couple of focus areas for us, employment centers. The Northern Employment Center with construction that's happening at Indian School and Cotton Area there now, the first phases of the development in that area, that's a focus employment corridor for us. As well as one they're very familiar with, of course, is the airpark area here. Looking at that a little bit closer, of course, we know this is kind of the epicenter of development over the next several years in terms of large square footage that's already planned, and many of the projects are underway and under construction now pertaining to retail, pertaining to industrial that's coming forward, and some that is already under construction. One of the neat things that's happened recently that's going to help even bolster this corridor more has to do with the airport. You're, of course, very familiar with the Airport Master Plan, and that project that has come through the city with, in coordination with the City of Phoenix. One of the things that happened recently with the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, for the first time, my understanding, maybe there was another time there was an FBO, but an FBO was selected this last summer, which is a major initiative for the airport. So Sunwestern Flyers was chosen through a very competitive process. In fact, I think you'll be pleased to know that through that process, there was significant response to the RFP that the City of Phoenix issued. And through a competitive process, Sunwestern Flyers was chosen and is now operating there at the airport. They have a five-year lease. Within that five-year lease, one of the things that's encouraged is for the development of the new terminal on the west side of the airport there. So they'll have the opportunity, I think, to renew that lease a couple of times after that for one year each, but that's a strong encouragement, and we're hopeful to see that happen. One of the great things that that does for the airport and the Phoenix Aviation Department is to freeze them up from a lot of those daily services that they have to provide or did have to provide to allow them to do more planning and management of the airport. It also provides another marketing arm for the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and we're very excited about that and creating some alliances there with Sunwestern Flyers, and then also, of course, with the Phoenix Aviation Department. So those things, we think, will boost that as well, and I think that's a great development. Last but definitely not least, I want to talk about is our economic development website. And this was something that was contemplated for some time in the economic development department, and very fortunate to have this. Few cities have a standalone economic development website. It links directly with, of course, the city's official website, but it's not a community-based website, but it's a website that reaches out to the larger market and specifically focused for economic development purposes, which we think will help us, help position Goodyear very well in the electronic world in terms of funding information. One of the reasons why we did this is because economic development's changed so much over the last few years. They used to contact the cities a lot directly, of course, by phone to gather that information. Now, more and more site selectors and other corporate real estate professionals look to cities and their websites to find that information in a quick and easy and fast and crisp way. So it helps us to serve that market outside of Goodyear, gives Goodyear a great presence in the development community, and specifically, it's targeted towards the site selectors, those corporate real estate professionals, developers, retailers, and others. So I encourage you to take a moment, when you have some time, and go to destinationgoodyear.com and look at the website that we've developed. It will also help us as we have included a lot of different site sheets for all the different disciplines, whether it be industrial or office or retail, and provide some community information, too. Important, one of the important things that provides is it shows the master plan communities as site selectors are looking for communities. One of the things, of course, they look for is not only just what their opportunities are there for the business, but where will people live? Are there well-planned communities? And that's one of the things that this website highlights very specifically, is to show how well-planned the community is, those master plan communities, in addition to all the other economic development demographic and other information that's available there. Also, this helps us to link directly to the Greater Phoenix Economic Development Council website and the different work that's going on there with the different sites that we have the opportunity to list there as well on their websites. So they'll have a direct link into an economic development-based website when they come from the economic development site of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. So that gives you a short brief, some updates as to what's happening in economic development, what we've been working on, a little bit about us, and if there's any questions that I can answer. If you have any questions of our department, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Questions? Sean?
I know that Goodyear has been somewhat forward-thinking and trying to also attract some private universities, higher ed, and I noticed that that component was absent. Is that, is there another department that is focusing, you know, on that regard, or is that something that you guys are continuing to do?
Mr. Commissioner and Commissioner Lox, from time to time, we do play a role in that. That has been a major initiative, of course, as you know, from the City Manager's Office, and the City Manager's Office, for the most part, has gone with that initiative by the city. From time to time, we do play a role in that, and obviously, higher education is an important factor in economic development as well. But it is a major initiative primarily by the Management's Office, the City Manager's Office.
Good. Thank you, Eric.
Harry, do, I want to follow up on Sean's question. Do we, when you, on our, on the, I've been to your website, and the question I really have is, is do we, having two private colleges and a possible third is, you know, that have started classes here, or are starting classes here this year, is something that, you know, you would think that the Economic Development Department would, you know, be waving the flag on?
Oh, we definitely do. We definitely.
And I was going to say, do you have something on your website that, you know, refers to these colleges that are now here as, you know, centers of higher learning for, especially for employers and post, you know, employment and education?
One of the things that we do have on our website now, and I believe it is from time to time, one of the rolling highlights as different development happens and different announcements come forward, and that will be one of the things that we can improve upon as well as we, as that develops more, as the universities being here. So now I think you'll see that represented, if it's not today, it has been represented the universities have selected Goodyear to come here. As they come forward with more and more programs, obviously, those will be things that definitely amenities and assets that the community has that we'll definitely capitalize on more.
Yeah, especially, I think, one of the universities is going to offer some type of an MBA program. You would think that, you know, I would think that we would want to, I mean, I won't say provide some free advertising, but, you know, business education is a big thing, and that would be something that I think we ought to be at least proactively pushing.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you completely, and that's something definitely, you know, I'm glad you brought it up. We'll go back and look at that and see if we can highlight that even more. I know it's highlighted to a large degree, of course, on the community-based website, official website. One of the things that we have done is, of course, look at where things that we should highlight and where, of course, some things that should be highlighted by the official website. But that's definitely one of those things that crosses over, and so maybe we can enhance that more and be happy to look at that.
I was just thinking, you know, as you were saying, that, you know, that's one of the selling points, and the fact that we have an Australian Mountain Community College here that offers work-based type of education, and now we have, you know, two private universities, that makes us stand out a little bit from our other Southwest competitors and even from some of our, you know, competitors in the metro area. And I would think we would want to emphasize the fact that, you know, Goodyear, you know, when businesses come looking for places to locate, they're going to look for an educated workforce and an available workforce, and, you know, we have rooftops and we have the opportunity for, to keep the people educated also.
I agree with you totally, and we will look at that and see if we can make some enhancements there. Appreciate the comments. If you have any others, feel free to email us or contact us as well.
All right, well, Harry, I want to make sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't come up with a question. And it's kind of a general question, and it's, Harry, I'm sorry, it's probably for more than you, but there's so much going on in the city, you know, in the planning department, with the colleges, with the Cleveland Indians. Is there some office in the city that kind of has some idea of what's going on every place to coordinate efforts so that there's not overlap, or if there are opportunities to complement each other, somebody can get those two activities together? You know what I'm saying?
Help me out a little bit there. In terms of, yeah, definitely, there's a lot of coordination among the city and the different opportunities we have to market the city and build upon those assets that we're creating, but I'm not quite sure exactly what your question is.
And I'm not sure either, but is there, is there one focal point? I mean, you know, you've got people working with the Indians and developing the ballpark site, and people working with the city center site, and you've got some other major projects, and, you know, there's just so much going on. It would be so easy for something to be happening here and something to be happening here that would complement each other very well, or maybe there's some overlap and the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. Is there, is there some focal point?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, primarily that falls on the City Manager's Office and their staff as, and they have project managers, and they report to the deputies, and so the deputies coordinate those kinds of activities. And then Paula Alardo is our Public Information Office, and she keeps track of, she keeps track of people, she comes to our weekly staff meetings, and we provide her updates on these projects. So that's the forum where the management kept up to date on that, so.
Good, thank you.
Definitely, there's a lot of coordination there, and I can appreciate that. Often, we do find that from time to time, you know, there's different, obviously, projects going on, and because of, whether it's infrastructure needs or other needs, or maybe it's marketing or whatever, those things bring us together if we're not, say, for example, on that same team, but there is a lot of coordination that goes on, and from time to time, we come together to ensure that we are totally coordinated on those things. Appreciate the comments.
Okay, Harry, on behalf of the commission, and I wish the rest of our, some of our other fellow commissioners who are here, I want to thank you for this briefing. I want to extend to you a, always an open invitation to come forth and tell us what's going on. And the other thing I want you to do is send some of your senior project managers here, maybe on a quarterly basis, to give us a retail update and a commercial update on a more specific basis. But thank you again for coming.
Thank you, we'll do that.
All right, moving along, any, Commissioner Williams? Okay, moving along, we're going to go to the consent agenda. The commission may by a single consent motion approve any number of applications where the commission staff and the applicant are agreement, where there is an invitation by the chairman to do so, and I've invited everybody to do that. We have one item on the consent agenda, does anybody, and I'll read that item. It is case 06700001, the 207th Avenue and Pecos General Plan Amendment, and it is a public hearing. The request is to continue the matter indefinitely, and no commission action will be taken on this matter until the case has been re-advertized and noticed for a further commission hearing. Does anybody want to pull that item, or can I get a vote?
I recommend approval of the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, and a second from Commissioner Lox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. New business. First order is case 07350004, I think I added too many zeros there, Skyway Church Special Use Permit. It's a public hearing to consider a request to amend an approved use permit for the Skyway Church to allow the field lighting of the existing community softball field located at Skyway Church at 14900 West Van Buren. The applicant is the Skyway Church, and I am going to open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation from Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, before Rick does his presentation, I need to inform the commission that on this item, this public hearing item, as well as item B and item D, the three public hearing items, that there was a glitch in the technical process to post these properties for this public hearing, for these public hearings. The other portions of the public process, notices, notice in the paper, letters to the neighborhood, were performed, but the third, the posting of the property 15 days prior to this public hearing, did not occur by the contractor that we hired to post the signs. Regretfully, that's the way it is, and to keep the process correct, the commission cannot take action on these items tonight because of the lack of the posting, which is required by our ordinance. We would recommend that you proceed, staff give presentation, commission answer questions, have discussion, invite those members of the public that are here to speak to those items, speak, up to the point of you cannot take action, and that we suggest that you would continue these items until December 5th. The properties have been posted for those public hearings for December 5th meeting, but we cannot take action tonight, and we apologize.
The signed contractor is remiss and deficient and has impeded the public works. And on that note, Mr. Williams, let her rip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, commission. As noted, this is a request by the Skyway Church to amend a use permit that was approved back in 1999. And if you just direct your attention to the map here, I would just show you that this is the Skyway Church campus. This is West Van Buren. This would be the Rancho Mirage subdivision there, Southwest Specialty Foods up here, and the Bullard Commerce Center and undeveloped land there to the east. Now, as I said, the approved, council approved the original use permit in 1999. Ballfield lights were originally considered, or contemplated is a better word, with that use permit. Unfortunately, it was approved, but subsequently, site plans and, with site plans and that use permit, ballfield lights were never included in the application, and that's use permit, ballfield lights were never included in the, in the application and that's why we're back here this evening. I've included in your staff report, standards set forth in Article 10 with regards to ballfield lighting and they're very specific with certain sets of standards. For example, all luminaries must be shielded, poles cannot exceed 80 feet in height, they must maintain on and off switches, direct light source is not, is not allowed to be visible from beyond the property line. And maybe most important in this circumstance, spill light cannot exceed 1.0 foot candles at any residential point along the line. Now, one thing that, I'll just go back to this or to a different exhibit here and just point out a couple of things. This is a little closer version of the map I just showed you. Again, this is the softball field in question here. This is the Bullard Wash and the nearest light pole, which according to the ordinance must be set back a minimum 50 feet from any residential property line. And I just wanted to point out that this is the Bullard Wash and the nearest property line, which would be here, would be roughly 450 feet from the nearest pole light. Back to the site plan over here, I just thought I would direct your attention to this quickly. Pole lights will be located here and here, along the right field line, here and here down the left field line and two out in center field as well. The city's lighting consultant has reviewed these plans and concludes that they do meet the, the standards set forth in Article 10 of the zoning ordinance. A citizen review meeting was held on August 30th of 2007 at the, at the Vinita Business Based on the, the conditions that we have here, instead of the 500-foot notice, we sent out a 1,000-foot notice to the residents to try and include more of the folks from the Rancho Mirage subdivision. We've had contact with the HOA president, I've had no direct contact with him personally, but Doug Cox, Skyway Church, as they've reached out to them to, to ensure to them that not only is this softball field being lit for certainly activities going on at Skyway Church, but they're open to the community as well. I did have one phone call from a Mr. Tony Weiser this afternoon and his concern was that he just wanted to make sure that the, that the, that the development standards to which they're saying they're going to develop at are actually followed up into here to basically make sure they build what they say they're going to build. There was no adjacent property participation at the citizen review meeting and, and I've had no further contact from any other residents in that area. That concludes my presentation this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Jerry from the Skyway Church is here, if you have any questions for him and I'll end it there.
Questions of staff, Commissioner Williams?
Are there any other future plans for improvement of the ballfield, like bleachers or concession stands?
I would, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, I would defer that to Jerry as far as bleachers, stands located there at the.
Not at this time, however, we are.
Could you, sir, 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 could you come up to the podium and please identify yourself if you want to make some comments where it's a pleasure, but please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Jerry, I'm the facilities manager.
Your last name?
Jerry Rowan.
Thank you.
Facility manager, Skyway Church.
Thank you.
We have lots of property left there that's undeveloped. We don't have any plans at this time to put any bleachers in, but in the, in the future, we're still designing what we can put in there. So it, it may come up in the future, but not at this time.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions of staff? Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, in that case, I am going to close the public hearing and commission discussion.
Mr. Chairman, even though you're not going to take action, we would suggest that you entertain comments from the public. Some members in the neighborhood or otherwise may have appeared tonight, seeing the notice.
All right, I screwed up. Anybody from the neighborhood like to speak or anybody would like to make a public comment on this item? Thank you. Seeing none, the, the, the hearing is closed, as I did previously, and is there any commission discussion on this item? Commissioner Williams?
Are we going to make this a part of the consent agenda for the December 5th meeting? Can we do that or is that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, because it is going to be, again, a notice public hearing, we really can't make it part of the consent agenda, but our plan is to put them at the first of the agenda and hopefully ask you to dispose of those items quickly prior to the bigger items. We also plan to ask the other three commissioners that are not present tonight via email to review the video of tonight's meeting in preparation for the December 5th meeting when they hopefully will be in attendance.
Any other, any other comments? Okay, I can ask for a motion to continue, is that correct? I would, I will entertain a motion to continue this item to our December 5th meeting.
Don't move, Mr. Chair, to continue this item to the December 5, 2007 meeting.
I have a motion from Vice Chair the Broker and a second from Commissioner Williams, all in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next case is case 062000012, Palm Valley 303 rezoning. This is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone 1,505 acres generally located between Citrus Road on the west, Bullard Wash on the east, Thomas Road on the south and Camelback Road to the north from the agricultural zoning district to a PAD zoning district. The applicant is Suncor Development Corporation and presenting will be David Canning. Sir, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The subject 1,500 acre property is generally located between Citrus Road, which is on the west side, Camelback Road on the north side, Charles Boulevard to the south and southeast and Thomas Road to the south. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from the agricultural district to the final planned area development district that would allow both light industrial and commercial uses. Total of 1,138 acres is planned for light industrial and 368 acres are planned for general commercial throughout the four phases that are part of this proposal. This differs from the original Palm Valley master plan, which envisioned 1,013 acres of light industrial and 492 acres of general commercial. The greatest impact that limits the acceptable types of development in Palm Valley 303 is Luke Air Force Base. A significant area of the property is located in the accident potential zones and nearly all of the property is located, located in a 65 LDN with higher noise contours. The general plan defines this area as a Luke compatible land use area and calls for uses such as general commercial and light industrial that comply with adopted state legislation. All development throughout Palm Valley 303 must comply with the state statutes which prohibit certain uses within the accident potential zones and the high noise contour areas. The applicant has met with representatives from Luke Air Force Base several times to discuss this project and Luke Air Force Base has agreed in concept to the zoning and will have an opportunity to review and comment on all future development projects before they are approved by the city. The applicant has submitted design guidelines and development parameters for Palm Valley 303 to ensure a unified development theme. Within the design guidelines are development parameters pertaining to building uses, setbacks, landscaping, parking, height requirements and architecture. The citizen review meeting was held on October 24th, 2007 and at that meeting, the residents were primarily interested in learning about the type of development that was proposed in Phase 4 of Palm Valley 303 project as well as potential heights, potential building heights. And if I could draw your attention to the projected screen, this is Phase 4 and of the Palm Valley 303 project and this is Phase 5 of Palm Valley and most of this is zoned single-family residential. The summary of that meeting is contained within the staff report. Since that meeting, staff has examined the issue of building heights further and believes that greater clarification is needed in the development guidelines to ensure that adequate setbacks are provided between Phase 4 of Palm Valley 303 and Palm Valley Phase 5. And this issue will be clarified prior to the next commission meeting and staff report. In conclusion, staff supports the PAD application. However, some clarifications are needed in the PAD development guidelines pertaining to height and setback requirements for future implementation purposes. Staff is recommending that the case be continued until the December 5th planning zoning commission meeting. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions of staff?
I have one, Mr. David. I'm looking at number 14 and the stipulation 14 on the percolation and would it be better to just say that an alternative method may be provided for percolation if certain criteria are not met? In other words, it says that, that should the retention not percolate in 36 hours, an alternative will be developed. I don't know what the alternative is. Maybe I should be asking.
I think that's boilerplate because I've seen this stuff and just lots of our, and lots of our most recent things. Do you want to kick that over to the table over there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Broker, this is a standard stipulation from the engineering department that we've included, concern regards to the percolation, use of dry wells, depending upon soils testing and whether or not they'll percolate and if they cannot show within those soils tests that it would percolate, then the engineering department would require other means to dispose of the storm water from the retention basins, lead off systems and other, that's about the extent of my engineering knowledge. We can certainly get more information to you and look at that stipulation prior to the December 5th meeting and have some clarification for that.
All right. Any other questions of staff? But I, I'm going to give them an opportunity, but, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, David, on this, on this map that you have, is this area north of Indian School and west of Pebble Creek Parkway, is that entire area, is that that large apartment complex that's about to be completed?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then all of, and everything east of Pebble Creek Parkway is single-family residential and south of Charles Boulevard?
Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission, there actually is a condominium development that's, that is currently under construction just to the east of that apartment project. And I believe there's another multifamily project proposed at the intersection of Falcon Drive and Indian School Road. And I think that's the extent of multifamily projects. Everything else is single-family with the exception of one commercial parcel also located off of Falcon Drive north of Indian School Road.
Thank you. One other question is, is that Charles Boulevard, will that end at Saraval like it does today or will that be continued down to either to the 303 or to Indian School Road? Doesn't that, doesn't that end at, at Saraval Road today? Is that, will that be continued down through area 2 or area 3 or will that, or will the, where it ends today, is that where it will be the end of it?
Chairman, I'm sorry, Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, this area has not been platted yet and might correct Jay that Saraval is, it ends somewhere in this area and it's anticipated that it will follow this street layout, but it has not yet been platted.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the staff?
Well, I just, well, just the one, the one concern that I have is there's a request in here someplace for an exception to building height to allow in some areas 75 feet or five-story buildings and I just would like to be sure that those buildings are properly buffered from the residential area. You know, I know, I know that Charles Boulevard is a wide street and I know that there is, I think drainage, drainage ditch on the north and west side of Charles Boulevard. So I know there will have to be some kind of setback, but I just want to make sure that if, if there are any five-story buildings allowed, that they're, you know, far enough back that they don't encroach on the resident, the single-family residential on the south side of Charles Boulevard.
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, if this property right here had an underlying zoning of commercial, the required setback for any building higher than 30 feet would be minimum of 30 feet plus one foot of additional setback for each foot over, for each foot of building height over 30 feet. Since this is proposed to have light industrial land uses, there is nothing in the zoning ordinance right now that addresses the issue of the separation requirements as they relate to building height. And so staff is currently working with the applicants to make sure that the PAD is clarified to mitigate any impacts that buildings over 30 or 40 feet would have on Palm Valley Phase 5. In the staff report, we mentioned what the requirements are for the commercial areas of the city and how that relates to building height and separation of commercial and residential. But we still need to address the issue of how, of what the setback, required setback should be for industrial land uses, which is, which are planned within Phase 4 along Charles Boulevard.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add to that, we have had discussions with the applicant in this regards. The applicant agrees with the need to provide a good landscape or setback buffer for the taller buildings as they may occur adjacent to the residential and has already included in the PAD some standards. We're working with them now to clarify those standards to specific measurements and, and you'll see as we come back to December 5th, we're looking at as you go from Charles Boulevard, from the residents setback up to Charles Boulevard, you know, setbacks that for the tallest building would, would be almost in the area of 270 feet. It would be requiring the additional setback as the buildings get taller.
Thank you.
Okay, David, do you have anything else or Mr. Ellingson, would you like to speak or come up and make a presentation? You don't have to. Come, come right up, please. Questions of the applicant or do you want to make a presentation first?
Well, not a full-blown presentation because I think that most everything's included in the packet, but to announce who I am, my name is Jay Ellingson. I'm with Suncor Development, 14130 West McDowell Road, Chairman, members of the commission, it's good to be here. There was one question that I can identify and give some answer to. Saraval Road, as you know, goes all the way through presently from Indian School to Camelback. In a condition that will be temporary, there will be a traffic signal put in at that intersection at Saraval within probably, I would think, six months. Just to, again, it's well-traveled and it's time to put that traffic signal in. As you can see on, on this particular map, the, the ultimate plan swings Saraval over to north of Charles Boulevard here, swings it over to Pebble Creek Parkway at about a quarter of a mile interval to the north, creates another major. quarter-mile interval to the north, creates another major intersection here. Charles Boulevard will always just continue to Saraval. When Pebble Creek Parkway is put through, that's, as it's always been on the master plan, is the through arterial that is on the west side of Luke Air Force Base. So it becomes a road that continues to be significant, although Saraval becomes a, more of a neighborhood road connecting into the arterial. In terms of the setbacks that we've been talking about, we too are cognizant of the fact that the residents should be protected in terms of setback requirements and we're well, we're trying to work very diligently with staff to ensure that that is the case. We already have discussed what we think are good solutions to that and so before the next meeting, I'm sure you'll get a copy of a revision in terms of a lot of those informational items so you can quantify them and, and see if that meets your measure in terms of what you think the requirement should be as well.
Any other questions of Mr. Ellingson, Commissioner Brokert?
On the percolation?
Okay.
Do you have alternatives?
The percolation really are twofold. You do retention basins and if they happen not to percolate like you like to, like them to be or what was characterized, characterized by the engineer, you can always install drywells now that the city has that as part of their engineering standard. We didn't have that before and this language really came and was kind of left over from that era where we didn't have drywells as an alternative. The other thing that we can do, we're fortunate to have, although we're height-challenged, it's a very flat area, we can also bleed it off into some of the channels that we have that surround the project. Can't put them in the first flow, but we can meter them out if we need an alternative as well.
All right. So if there are alternatives?
There is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lacks? Okay. I have one comment from the public of Mr. Robert Travis. Would you care to come up and address the commission? Would you identify yourself?
Certainly. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Travis. I live at 15686 West Meadowbrook, which is approximately located right here. My house is directly fronting Charles Boulevard and I received an initial notice on this citizen comment review and attended that meeting with about six of my neighbors. I also received a letter about this meeting and I appreciate Mr. Coons's comment that no public signs were posted. I'm not sure where the consultant was directed to post the signs, but I know this afternoon I checked, there's no signs on Charles, Indian School, the 303 or Camelback. So I'm not sure where, where he was to post them. I would like to reiterate some comments and concerns that I've heard from people today. It is the same ones that I've heard from many of my neighbors that have property that directly butts up against Charles Way. That is our concern with the height and with the noise of the potential developments. We realize there will be development there. We would love to maintain our views of the white tanks, but it's the joys of development. It will come. We're also very, I know I am personally very happy to hear that the staff is looking at setbacks, looking at buffers, as I mentioned at the citizen review. My big concern when it was commented there might be seventy-five-foot buildings, I'm going, okay, I've got a single-family residence, I don't want to be on my backyard. I look up and there's a person on the fifth floor looking down at me. And what I have heard from at both this meeting and at that meeting is there's going to be guarantees that that, that there'll be either adequate setbacks or adequate screening for that. Other concerns that I've also heard from my neighbors addresses what is going to happen to Charles Way. Are we going to see increased traffic, which we're expecting? If so, we would like to bring it to the planning council and hopefully also to the city's attention. We are already seeing problems with high speeds and even in some cases, people drag racing back there. With this development, I don't think it will increase it, but just please be aware there are already some traffic issues back there. Finally, one of the comments on, in the staff recommendation dealing with the roll-up doors, I'll be very curious to see what happens with that because again, like I said, our primary concerns is what's going to be the noise and what's going to be some of the visual impacts of these new developments on our properties. In closing, again, I would like to thank the Planning Commission for posting the staff report. I would like to know maybe as just a general question, if there's any way we, the citizens of the area, can also review the information that was provided by Suncor for their planned area development and their guidelines so that at the December 5th meeting, we may be able to comment on those as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Can I go back and ask one more question, probably to Jay?
Can I, can I finish with Mr. Travis first then?
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Travis, thank you for addressing the commission a couple of items. If there is drag racing on Charles Avenue, I would encourage you to contact the police department, not on the 911 number, but on their general number that goes right into the dispatch office. And I'm sure that they would be happy to send a patrol officer out there who would be more than happy to increase the city's revenue by curbing those issues. The second thing is all of these records are public and I'm sure that if you contact Mr. Canning directly, I'm sure he would be able to set up a meeting with you so that you could have a chance to review the record and the submittal of Suncor Development. And my, my third comment to you is while nothing is in concrete on building heights, and I am a proponent of tall buildings, so I will just let you know there, the setback that are being discussed with the developer are more than generous and more than our city standards require. So I think you will be pleased in that nature. Anything else, sir?
I would just say thank you for that and I appreciate your, Jay's work on this. He told us at the citizen meeting, he wants to work with us. He realizes this is going to be in our backyard. And again, when he mentioned the two-hundred-and-thirty-foot potential setback for a seventy-five-foot building, that sounds very generous and I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming to the meeting. Mr. Ellingson, Commissioner Williams has a question for you, please.
Yes, sir. Traffic patterns, I guess. Is there, will there be access to both Area Two and Area Four from the 303? And I guess where I, what my real question is, is can, can we do things to encourage truck traffic into those two sections to use the 303 off of I-10 rather than to use Pebble Creek Parkway?
Chairman, Commissioner Williams, I think that that's doable. In fact, we envision in terms of truck traffic using the 303 and getting off probably at Camelback. That would be the most direct path into most of the, the distribution areas. Remember that the distribution areas really are in one and two and so, and also six potentially. So we think that by natural placement and occurrence of where those buildings will be, I think that's effectively what will happen.
Well, and I think the congestion around the mall and all the development down on Pebble Creek Parkway and I-10 will also encourage truck drivers to go someplace else, but I just, as we go forward, if there's things we can do to encourage that, I would appreciate you doing that.
We would agree and be supportive. I think right now Pebble Creek Parkway, if I'm not mistaken, is, is posted, no truck traffic, particularly through Indian School to McDowell.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or questions of the applicant? All right. Any other public comments on this, this matter? All right. I am going to close the public hearing and ask for commission discussion. And I want to ask a housekeeping question. Do we, even though we're going to continue this public hearing to the next meeting, do we need at this time to announce our intentions of how, you know, if we have concerns or whether, where we stand on these items?
Mr. Chairman, certainly. If you have concerns, items that you'd like staff and the applicant to work further on prior to December 5th, if that's where you're going, now would be the time to do so.
Okay.
We have identified some of them and, and are working to clarify some of the items so that when it is taken action on, that they're clear. If you have others, we'd certainly appreciate hearing that.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from the commission? Commissioner Williams?
If signs, Mr. Travis suggested that signs still are not posted there today. If they are not posted today, can we delay this until the meeting on the 5th or do we have to delay it till a later meeting? What day do the signs have to be up for us to have them?
The signs need to be up fifteen days prior to hearing, so anytime before next Tuesday. Yeah, it was this afternoon when we were told that he was posting them, which we will check on.
It's appropriate. And, and maybe the applicant wants to check on our sign placement people right now. They're a little deficient. Commissioner Lacks, any questions, any comments? Commissioner DeBrocker? All right. In that case, Commissioner Williams?
I will, I will move that if the signs are posted in sufficient time, that case number 06-200-00012 be delayed until the December 5th meeting.
I have a motion from Commissioner Williams.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Lacks. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I just have it four-zero. Okay, I want to do a little housekeeping. On the Skyway Church item, I did forget to ask if there was any commission concerns and I want to ask if there were any commission concerns on this item to, that need to be directed to staff. Are there any concerns? And if not, I want to say that I'm in favor of this and I think the commission will hopefully act favorably on it. The other comment I wanted to make was that I wanted to commend staff on sending out notices to residents or parcels within a thousand feet. That has been one of my pet peeves that, you know, we send, our standard thing is we send them out five hundred feet and there's nobody that lives five hundred feet, but five hundred and ten feet away, there's somebody there. And I want to say thank you to Planner Williams for doing good with the government dollar. So thank you again. And on that note, I am going to move to the next item of business, which is the case 0663000004, Palm Valley 303 Comprehensive Sign Package. And I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Mr. Canning, our staff member, to present this.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsor and members of the commission. The applicant is requesting approval of a comprehensive sign package for all of Palm Valley 303. The comprehensive sign package proposal addresses building-mounted signage and nine different types of freeway, freestanding monument signs, not freeway, but freestanding monument signs. The projected exhibit shows the location of each proposed monument sign. Although, although there are deviations from the sign provisions of the zoning ordinance, the proposed monument signs contained within the comprehensive sign package have a unified design theme and character appropriate to a planned area development. As such, staff supports the comprehensive sign package proposal, but recommends that it be continued since the proposed PAD zoning for the same development is also being continued. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
All right. Opportunity for the applicant.
Chairman, members of the commission, Jay Ellingson, Suncor Development. We are, we're in agreement with staff to continue it, even though you could make a case that this could stand by itself and move forward. We think that they're so intertwined that it makes a lot of sense and so we've made a big effort to put them together and we would like to see them therefore kept together on the same docket on December 5th.
Okay. I have a question for the applicant, but I'm going to check to my commissioners. Questions for the applicant on the sign package? Mr. Lacks? Commissioner Lacks?
I just, I just wanted to sort of state for the record that I have some concerns. You know, I, I am not a proponent of freeway pylon signs and I see you are offering four. And so I just have a concern of the number of them and, and hope that perhaps that number could be reduced by the, by the 5th meeting. And I know that obviously you want the four and, and, but I just wanted to go on record to say that four is a bit much for me.
Other comments? Chairman, Vice Chairman DeBrocker, Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Williams? Mr. Chairman, if I might interject at this time from Commissioner Lacks's comments, I want to make, staff wants to make it clear that in this comprehensive sign package, there is no consideration of approval for freeway pylon signs. They are included in this package for reference purposes. The ordinance requires a special, a use permit to be submitted for any freeway pylon signs. The applicant has done that. That will be a separate application for consideration of the freeway signs at a subsequent date, not on December 5th. On December 5th? Right. But a subsequent meeting after that. Just so, they're included in the package, but they're not a part of the approval when you do take it. That will be a later public hearing.
Okay.
Did I confuse items?
No. You didn't. Any other questions of the applicant? Because I have, Commissioner Williams?
Just one comment that tails with Harvey's comments, the freeway pylon signs, you know, it doesn't appear to me on this diagram that they have adequate spacing between them. And what is it, quarter mile or a half mile is supposed to have between freeway? It looks like there's two on the west side of the 303 that aren't far enough apart and two on the east side of the 303 that aren't far enough apart.
I could respond to that.
Go for it.
Actually, that, although our maps are small, the distances are great. In terms of, in terms of what you're seeing, I can assure you they do meet your criteria in terms of distance. The distance that we're looking at is over a mile and a half in terms of, so when we say the separation, we try to be very specific in terms of your, your desired separation. And so...
Is this far?
Yeah, that's right. Again, the maps are small, but the distances are great, so.
I, I want to, I'm going to echo on Commissioner Lacks and Commissioner Williams on the highway pylon signs. When I was reading through this and I saw four of them, I just about kind of like said, well, it's a good thing that we're not considering those because I would not be flying through here. And I can honestly say that I think you're going to give council heartburn if you come back with four. So I would, I would revise that. That, that's my one negative on this, okay? My, my positive, my extreme positive is the, the project identification silos. They are so cool. They are great. When are you going to build them because economic development has them on their website already? So people are going to come looking for those, Jay, and you better have those babies up as soon as this thing's approved or, you know, darn close because they're just like, they look great. And I just encourage you to get those up sooner and make this look classy. I know it costs money, but I think you'll reap the rewards.
Chairman, thank you. I'm trying to distinguish between a compliment and a threat.
I see him in my lifetime. Well, I see them in my lifetime, Jay, okay, on, as a, as the, as on, as on the commission. All right. Thank you very much. All right. The applicant and staff have asked for a continuance to keep this bundle together, and I do not see any reason why. So, I am going to ask for a, I'm sorry, excuse me. Public comments? Anybody? I, no, I don't. I had them. Any other public comments on the sign package? All right, in that case, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this case to the December 5th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue case 06-630-00004, Palm Valley 303 Comprehensive Sign Package, until the December 5th, 2007, Hanning and Dunning.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Lox and a second from Vice Chairman DeBrocker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it 4-0. And our next case is case 06-200-00026, Sun DS Farms' final planned area development. And the, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask that our staff presenter, who is Steve Carecchia, give us a presentation. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commission members. This is a request for a final PAD zoning for Sun DS Farms. We're looking at about 160 acres with this development. Surrounding Sun DS Farms, we have Strayville Vista to the north and Strayville Village to the west. We have the proposed Wood Corporate Center to the east, and then we have Arizona Galvanizing and Strayville. Awesome, thank you. Getting confused there. Also to the south. Zoning right now is preliminary PAD, and that was approved by the city council in September 2006. This is a request for the final PAD zoning, the second step in the process. And this is the final PAD development plan proposed with this development. Got about 90 acres for residential, 18 acres for commercial, 10 for office, and 41 acres for business park uses. With this development plan, staff finds it is consistent with the approved preliminary PAD. After our review, we also find it consistent with our general plan, and we find it is compatible with the surrounding land uses in the area. As such, the staff recommendation for this final PAD is approval, though we are recommending it be continued to December 5th. One quick note, Mr. Chairman, staff and applicant are working on a few of the stipulations, just minor items with some wording, which we'll provide the final versions on December 5th.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of staff at this point in time? All right, now I will invite the applicant to come up and make a presentation.
Good evening, commission. I'm Darrell Manhart, 702 East Osborne Road, Phoenix. And with me here tonight is both Todd Tupper with Sun DS Farms and Kevin Kugler from RBF Consulting. And thanks, Steve, for his presentation. A few things I might like to just point out while I'm standing here, since I have the opportunity, is the developer worked quite a bit communicating with the neighboring communities, and the circulation system here was particularly developed to take care of residents' concerns about cut-through traffic. And additionally, there are ample buffers between the different areas, both the residential area, Strayville Village to the west, and, like to point out, across the north there, where Lower Buckeye Road would be extended, the alignment having been abandoned to the west, that would be a dead end in any event. And there's a proposal, you should see in the staff report there, to put in a trail across the, the north part of that right-of-way that would be installed by the developer as part of this project. I agree with staff's discussion about this. The surrounding areas, this provides a good transition with the predominantly light industrial around the east and the south, across this proposed development to the residential, to the, the north and the west. And we have the, the density changes across that and the density and type of residence, residential development over there to the west side, roughly corresponding or comparable to that that's already existing there. That's about all I wanted to add, but we do have here both, as I said, Todd Tupper and Kevin Kugler, if there are any additional questions. Thank you.
Okay. Don't go away. Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Williams?
Yes, can you elaborate on the trail, please? Do we have another trail connectivity issue here? Will that connect to a trail in the, in the subdivision immediately to the west?
Chairman and Commissioner Williams, I am ignorant of exactly what trail may be in Strayville Village, except I can see from the aerial that there's a green area there. There is no trail currently across there that I know of. There's simply the presently unused alignment for Lower Buckeye Road, and the proposal is to install a 33-foot-wide trail with a meandering sidewalk down the middle of it that would have its terminus on the, the east side over where the Lower Buckeye Road will then end, and its other terminus there over at the intersection or the boundary with Strayville Village. But I do not actually know what is existing on that side. Sorry, we don't know what's over there.
Basically, it's not really a trail, it's just a buffer between your area and the subdivision in the north.
Well, I think it's an effort to, to do something attractive there rather than have a dead-end road or, or completely undeveloped area, because the road's not needed.
I understand, and I appreciate that, but, you know, we, we're into trails, and we like to have a meander and go a long way if we can.
Well, there, there will be a connection between that and the, and the other pedestrian circulation across Sun DS Farms, of course, so if people want to traverse that subdivision to get up to that trail, they'll certainly be able to do so. I apologize again, I'm ignorant as to where they'll be going when they walk down to the end of that.
I have a question for you, and, and this question, if you can't answer it today, I'd appreciate some type of answer at the next meeting. But when we were touring the property this afternoon, I think there's an RID canal on the western boundary, or there's some kind of irrigation ditch that's on the western boundary of this property. And could you tell us what the plan for that ditch would be?
Do you know about the ditch?
Yeah.
I don't.
Todd Tupper, Sun MP, Sun MP Investment Properties LLC, 8601 North Scottsdale Road. Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioners, you're right, there is an RID canal there. Basically, if, if the downstream lands still need water, we will probably through the development have to tile that channel.
Tile it, does that mean channelize it with concrete, or put a pipe there?
Put a pipe there.
Okay.
Right. But, I mean, there's a similar discussion going on on the east side of Estrella Parkway relative to the baseball stadium, where a number of property owners are discussing abandoning in a similar lateral canal. So, that would, we would have to get together once we get into the development to really figure out whether or not we can actually abandon that.
And if the, if you, if it's a, either way, it would, the surface will be landscaped to some extent. So, I mean, if you can't abandon it, you will pipe it and then put dirt over it, whatever. And if you can't abandon it, it'll just get filled in and landscaped.
To the first, if, if the canal is still there and if it's tiled, most likely, we will probably put some landscaping in. Unfortunately, we can't put trees in because of the pipe. If, if that lateral can be abandoned, most likely what you will see is the subdivision wall there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Tupper? Okay, I have one public comment of Frank Cardinelli, I believe. Would you like to come up and identify yourself and speak to the commission?
Thank you. My name is Frank Cardinelli. I'm 15518 West Magnolia Street, just a couple hundred feet away. My first question would be, what is exactly the idea with neighborhood commercial? Just what is, what is their vision of what's going to be in there? Is it going to be a strip mall? Is it going to be a grouping of, of stores? Is there going to be a gas station and a, you know, and a Quickie Mart and a, and a car wash or something in there? My other question is, is that if it is a little more than just would be basic, a few little stores, it's a little close to me for my liking. I'm directly across from it. With all of the commerce down at the south end, I would think that commercial maybe could be a little more south and a little less north. They did a nice job on the west side with, with having houses here, but this area right in here, there's a large amount of houses across from it, and I would think that maybe they could even, you know, do something with that. My other question is this, right on the corner of Estrella Parkway and Lower Buckeye, there is what appears to be a rather large tree. It's humongous, it's green, and it's vertical, which makes it a rarity in the area. There's only two of them there. I was wondering, could anything be done with maybe saving that? Because it is quite a monumental-looking thing compared to everything else which is beige and horizontal in the area. Those would be my two, my two items, the, the commercial area and that tree.
I appreciate your comments, sir. I assume you are aware that across the street is Ballpark Village and parks and, and other development that is going to take place in that area. So, I just want to make sure that you are aware of that. Secondly, I am going to direct your question to staff, because all of your concerns about neighborhood commercial are, are in the realm of possibilities. However, a gas station would probably have to come before the commission for a special use permit. So, I'm going to, Mr. Coons, I'm going to let you take this one, sir.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Cardinelli, the neighborhood commercial is planned for neighborhood commercial uses. It is to be with, conducted under the city's C2 zoning district, which is neighborhood commercial uses, grocery stores, drugstores, retail shops. At the 18 acres that is proposed, I think you would probably envision the typical neighborhood shopping center. Freestanding pads, inline shops, the pads would be fast-food restaurants, potentially gas stations. Under the zoning ordinance, drive-thru restaurants and gas stations require a separate review. If that, if that was your concern, there'd be a subsequent hearing on anything proposed in that regards. It would prohibit the largest, not prohibit, any of the larger retail users, that over 100,000 square feet, Target, Home Depot, would also require a special review. But anything in between as a typical neighborhood commercial use would be allowed.
My, my question about the gas station was, I noticed when I, when I moved here that they still allow MTBE as an additive to gasoline. Coming from Long Island, you may find out very soon what a disaster that's going to be for you people. And the quicker you stop that from being an additive in the gasoline, the better everybody's going to be. So, that, the fact that a tank could be 500 feet from my house with MTB as an additive literally scared the hell out of me, so. I just wanted to find out what, you know, what was going on with that.
Commissioner Lox?
It's my understanding that, that MTBE is being phased out as, as a gasoline.
That's a good thing.
Ethanol.
We pay big time for that.
Ethanol. Your concerns about the trees are something that the commission holds dearly, and I believe the trees are on the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye where that, where the kind of farmhouse area is.
Yeah, the one big tree is right, right.
I mean, on the southeast corner?
Yeah, right, exactly, right here is, is that one tree. There are two others like it across the street where that farmhouse is. But yes, that, that tree, I mean, it's big, it's green, and, you know, it's, it's a rarity, so, you know.
Mr. Tupper, would you like to address the trees and give us a reference that they'll be there?
I, I think, first of all, we have to make a distinction between whether or not it really is a tree. I, it is a, it is a tamarisk bush that has gone awry. It really is more of an invasive plant that people.
Are you sure it's tamarisk?
Yes, I am. I'm very sure.
Okay, then it is.
And the streets, and the trees across the street, if I believe correctly, are not tamarisk. I think they may be pine trees, if, if memory serves me correct, or some other kind of thing, but they're, they're not tamarisk.
Mr. Cardinelli, just so you know, since you are not a native of Arizona, nor am I, and I am from Long Island, but tamarisk is an invasive species of tree here. It kind of takes the cottonwoods and wipe, and basically overtakes the cottonwoods that grow in the washes area. And there is a concerted effort throughout the state to remove tamarisk trees. So, most probably, this tree will be toast.
Correct. As, as a matter of fact, we are, we actually got a bid to, to make it toast, to remove it. I, I think there's a counterargument, just, just for his benefit and maybe some of the other people that live there. I think some people would rather see those go away, because if they go away, they probably will have a very nice view of, of the Sierra Estrellas. And as another thing, since that is a fairly prominent corner for this project, there will probably be some other kind of landscaping and other things that will make that corner very nice.
Oh, we will make sure that it is.
I, I'm sure you will.
We have a higher standard. Every year, the standard gets higher, Mr. Tupper.
Yes, sir. I'm aware of that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Cardinelli, you okay? Or do you want to address the commission one more time?
Thank you very much for, for the attention given. The answers were very good. I would request that if it is that bad of a deal to have that tree there, maybe part of what could be there could be another large type of tree, something that wouldn't be so, so invasive, but retain the fact that there was something very large and very green there at one time, because it is, like I said, it is a rarity in this area, and it would be nice to recreate it somehow.
Well, as I told, Mr. Tupper, the planning commission every year raises the standards of, of corner monuments and the landscaping required, so we don't accept the status quo anymore, and we push for, for a better look.
Excellent, thank you.
But thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. I am going, any other comments? All right, I've gone to one. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion to, to continue this item to our December 5th meeting, please.
I move.
Commissioner Williams, I have a motion for Commissioner Williams, and I have a second for Commissioner, Vice Chair DeBrocker.
Correct.
And all in favor say aye. And the ayes have it 6-4-0.
Mr. Chairman, one clarification.
Come up, Mr. Manhart just whispered it on my ear, but the, the posting that's going to be there today, is it, is it going to be for the posting for today's date, or will it change?
We'll fix it.
The 5th?
Okay. That's all we want to know. They'll fix it. All right, thank you. All right, here we are, case number 07-520-00027, Pebble Creek, Phase 2, Unit 44, Preliminary Platte, and I'm going to open the public hearing, bang, and ask for Mr. Carecchia to make his presentation.
Thanks again, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a Platte for Unit 44 in Pebble Creek. What we have surrounding us is Tustin Falls, the clubhouse to the east, we also have the golf course, and the rest is future proposed development within Pebble Creek. This is 24 acres. One correction I'd like to make is it's, at this time, it's 61 lots and not the 66 referenced in the staff report. There are five lots that are, will be coming, but that will be only once the sales center in tract F is removed. That tract F will be those five lots that'll be coming. So, 66 lots are ultimately proposed. At this time, this platte is just 61 lots. They are luxury premier Sierra Series. this plat is just 61 lots. They are luxury premier Sierra Series, which the typical lot is about 70 feet wide by 120 feet deep. Density is 2.75 dwelling units per acre. And this is the tract F that I mentioned before, that's going to be the proposed sales center for the models in this side of Pebble Creek. And then also, several model homes will be placed along lots in this area, especially along the golf course. Staff does find that this pre-plat does meet the development standards in the Pebble Creek P80 and also our subdivision regulations, and we are recommending approval of this plat, subject to the 24 stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, staff and applicants are available for questions.
All right. Any questions of staff? All right, let me invite the applicant to come up and speak, because I have questions for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name is Ken Marx, representing Robeson Communities, 9666 East Riggs Road in Sun Lakes. We've gone through all the stipulations. We have no problem with any of them. We have been working with Mr. Kraus and his staff and other department members in putting together the model village. This is a very important project for us. It's not just the next subdivision in the Pebble Creek project. By this time next year, we would hope to have the model village open there, and we'll be phasing out the model village in Phase 1, so this will be the primary sales venue for Pebble Creek going forward. So if there's any questions you have, I'll attempt to answer them.
Commissioner Williams, do you want me to work them over?
Oh, let me start.
Go for it.
As a Pebble Creek resident, may I assume that Unit 44 will be developed to the same standards that the previous units, and it will just be, continue the same plan and be very consistent with what you've already done?
That is the plan. There may be some different models that we're planning on introducing. You'll notice that there are some larger lots in this subdivision than previously. We have some 80 by 130 lots along the golf course there, and we're planning on introducing a new model for that. But other than that, I think you can, your statement is correct. It'll be in the same manner as Pebble Creek was previously developed. Thank you.
Okay, I have, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lacks, Commissioner DeBrocker? Okay, I have a couple of questions. As another Pebble Creek resident, I'm sure inquiring minds want to know, first of all, will there be a sales center developed in this area? And then I have subsequent questions based on that answer.
The answer is yes, and that would be developed on tract F. You can kind of see an outline of it there on the pre-plat. We're planning on building two houses and then some additional office space there, but the outside will look like houses, the inside will not be houses. We'll demise that into a sales center and a design center.
Okay. Since this is the first I've heard about this, and I'm sure the inquiring minds in the eGroup will be, you know, wild with, you know, with the new results, what is the intention of the Robeson Corporation on the current sales center when this new one is completed? And then my second question would be, what is the intention of all the models that are currently in the current model village, and what is the intention of the corporation on the disposition of those models? So the sales center and the models over on the Eagle's Nest site.
Sure. I don't know that there is anything finally decided on the sales center itself yet. I can tell you, in the past, Sun Lakes is a good example, the models were sold. The street would be widened out to the normal subdivision standard. The utilities are already in the ground there, and so those would be sold. Any lots that don't have houses on them in the current model village would be built out and sold. The sales center itself, normally there is a negotiation between Robeson and the homeowners association as to whether or not the association wants that for some use, and if not, then normally that's torn down and houses are built in that location. But I would anticipate that there would be some discussion with you folks before any decision is made on that.
Okay. On the, on the houses, on the model, the current model village, would I be in, would, if, would those houses probably go up for sale sometime in the next, within a two-year frame? Is that, is that an accurate timetable?
I think that's a pretty good bet. We would not want to go any length of time at all without having models available. So on our timetable now, these would be up and operational by late next year, so I would anticipate that the existing models would remain open as models until that point. And then when these open up and we're open for business here, probably, you know, within a few days or a week or something, we would close down the other one and begin the reconstruction of that area to open those up for sale.
Okay. And then the last question on going back to this Area 44, this would be a different model village in that you would have models interspersed with real homes and home sites that people actually live in. Is that correct?
No, we would not do that.
Oh, okay.
Our plan is right now to file the final plat over all of Unit 44. We have two different phases that we're looking at for that model village. The first one is shown there. Along the, let's see, along this area down in here, at some point in the future, we're looking at making that the second phase of the model village, so eight, 10 years probably, something like that. We would move from this area over into this area. And then we don't intend to sell any of the other houses in that subdivision until probably the very end of the project.
Okay, so this would just be a model village in Area 44, and people would not be living in, you know, residents, Pebble Creek would not be living in that area over the, basically, until Pebble Creek is built out and sold.
Toward the end of the project, yes, correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Can, are there, will the entrance exit, the gate on Sarville at Indian School, will that be changed to provide access into the new model village, or will access still be through the main gate on Pebble Creek Parkway?
The plan is to have it still on Pebble Creek Parkway.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Any other questions of staff? Anybody in the public like to address this issue? In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and let the public know that you heard it here first, the planning commission on the new model village of Pebble Creek. And on that note, I would, and we can actually vote on this one.
Yes.
Commission discussion. Anything, any commission discussion? All right, let's have a motion to approve, please.
I will, Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve case number 07-500-0007, a preliminary plat for Pebble Creek, Phase 2, Unit 44.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Williams and a second from Vice Chairman DeBrocker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. All right. We actually did some business tonight. All right. Next order of business is, and our last item, is case 07-500-00014, Australia Parcel 5.9 preliminary plat, and I'm going to ask, open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation from Mr. Abasoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. What you have before you is a request for a preliminary condominium plat for an area in Australia, Gulf Village, particularly Parcel 5.9. The aerial that you see here on Elmo actually kind of dated, but I think it still gives you a good idea of the, of some of the contextual information. Parcel 5, we were on Parcel 5.9, located in this general area here. It's approximately 28 acres. Directly to the southeast or southwest is Parcel 95, a subdivision that I believe is closed, if not closed to being built out. And you can see a number of fairways from the golf course located around the subject property. And over here, of course, is Parcel 91, another subdivision that I, that is built out. And if I could go to, real quick, a more detailed area that focuses on that area a little bit more. You can see the golf fairways, as well as kind of an idea of topography of the subject property, as well as property surrounding it. Now, in lieu of the preliminary plat maps that you see before you, I did obtain a more detailed rendering or an overall plat map for the parcel. On an 11 by 17 here, so I'll try to show you as much as it looks like, it's a pretty good representation there. See if there's an autofocus here. Not finding it, but at any rate, as you can see, the preliminary plat map before you shows you a pretty narrow scope of the different sections of this plating area. But just to give you an idea, some more information about the 28 acres, what the applicant is proposing is 86 units, 86 condominium units spread throughout 35 buildings. Now, each building would have anywhere between two to four dwelling units located within them. They will include anywhere between, they will include indoor garages with room anywhere between two to four cars. The, now, just to give you some more background information about the site, the general plan designates this for medium-high-density residential. The underlying zoning is for high density. Now, what the applicant is proposing, what you see before you with the 86 units within this area, the density will be a little over three units to the acre, so it's well below the high-density residential, which allows 12 or more, I should say, yeah, a baseline density of 12 units to the acre. Now, with that, I'll explain that staff is recommending approval contingent on those 14 stipulations before you. The applicant has come forth, or actually has in their possession, some pretty good representations of the product, or the, some renderings and architectural elevations of the housing type that will be offered here. This is actually a photograph that I just received from the applicant of a three-dimensional model. I won't go too much into this because I just received it, but the applicant will be here with some renderings as well to show you, which is a pretty good representation of the condominium product they will be proposing. And with that, I'll conclude my comments.
Questions of staff? I, if no one does, I have a few. Farhad, Track 16, which is the track that seems to run the length of the project and is, is that the power line easement track? Is that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, there is an easement along that track that belongs to the electric company.
Okay, and that is where the power lines that we saw today when we were taking the tour, is that where they go, or is that where they are?
I'm fairly certain that's where they are, yeah.
Okay. Next question is, there is a gas line easement on that, in that track also. Is there a, is there gas service, is there a pipeline that's going through there at the current time, or is that an easement that is for the future?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Southwest Gas has a pipeline going underneath there.
Okay, so that is, that is where that gas line is located?
Correct.
Do we need to put in the public notification the fact, obviously, people can see the power lines, but do we need to put in notification, or have we done this in any of the Newland developments where the pipeline actually runs adjacent to the properties?
I'm trying to recall if I worked on any plats which included that easement, but...
Yes. Do, we have? Do we need a stip, did I miss a stipulation, or do we need a stipulation that makes a comment that there should be a public notification concerning this pipeline that's running along the track? I mean, I hate to, I hate to, you know, put a negative impetus on sales, but the fact that there is a gas line there. Chairman, Mr. Kraus?
I would think that'd be prudent. Probably part of the real estate report should have that in there too, but it wouldn't hurt to have a disclosure for residents that's adjacent to the community.
If we, if, if we were to add this stipulation and recommend that staff insert a stipulation to do this, Mr., I'm going to invite the applicant to come up. Would you have any problems with that, so that we can move it along and it can go to council, so that staff can add the stipulation when it gets to council, it'll be there? Okay. In that case, could you come up and, I'm sorry, could you come up and identify yourself for the record?
Mark Kaplan, Arizona Village Communities, 8777 North Gaining Center Drive in Scottsdale, 85258. There is a sign already notifying as you drive by there. I don't know if you were there recently.
You were there today, but I didn't see.
There's a sign, high-pressure gas, and we're aware of it, and we'll comply with whatever stipulation you want for notifications.
I just want to, you know, I mean, we have a normal stipulation for the air park and the power lines are there, and I think we should at least put this gas line on this one, if that's okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant while we have him at the podium? Mr. Williams?
Can you tell us what the range of the square footage for the individual units will be, and are they, are they like a mixture of ranch and townhouse-type condominiums?
I have a whole lot of boards that I could show you that would really help you as far as the elevations. It's a mixture of two, three, and fourplexes. Single-story, two-story. There's different elevations. So there's Italian, there's Spanish Colonial, there's Spanish, not really what I would consider townhouse product. It's more condo, high-end condo.
So the two-story is just one unit, it's not one unit on the level?
Correct, no, correct. It's all in cases. There's just common walls.
Thank you. Oh, and do you have any idea what the projected square footage of the units?
I believe it ranges from 1,800 square feet is the smallest to right at 2,200 square feet. 26.
And you're, the condoization is the condo association will own all the common areas?
Yes.
And are there any, some of the units have common walls, is that correct?
Yes.
Between them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have that, the common wall stipulation in there? You know, I, you know, the common, there's a...
I don't quite see it.
There, you know, Harvey, we have a standard stipulation on common walls that talks about... There, you know, Harvey, we have a standard stipulation on common walls that talks about sound attenuation and everything else, can we add that stipulation also, please?
Yes.
Okay, all right, you're okay with that?
Yes.
All right, good, okay, we have two that we're going to add. All right, any other questions of staff, the applicant? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Okay, I think this, all right, nobody wants to do that, I think this looks great. When I, when I saw the track maps, I was really very impressed, and I hadn't seen the elevations, and when I, now that I see the elevations and see the models, this is, this is good stuff, go get them, I hope you sell a hell of a lot of them and, you know, get the nice people that are going to live there into the city.
You find a hell of a lot of, that's at least 86.
Yeah, something like that, I'm sorry, okay, fine. And on that note, we can actually do this business too. I'm going to close the public hearing, commission discussion. Seeing none, and the commission, the chairman thought this was really good stuff, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
In an effort to suck up to the chairman, I'll second.
All right.
But with the revised stipulation?
With the revised, with the...
They had two stipulations.
Two stipulations, all right. I have a motion from Vice Chairman DeBrocker, a second from Commissioner Williams. We're going to approve this with the additional two stipulations, gas line and the common wall, sound attenuation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, four zero. Thank you very much. Welcome to Goodyear.
Where do I sign up to get on your list?
All right. The staff, next item is staff communications. There is, much to the chairman's regret, there is a special planning and zoning commission meeting on December 5, 2007, and I believe the chairman will be somewhere on the, near the Canary Islands, and will not be able to attend either by voice or by in-person. And on that note, is there anything else, Harvey?
Well, at that, at that December 5 special meeting, I just want to forewarn you, we will have a public hearing on the high school charter, I think it's called Image Charter School proposal, they, we are recommending denial of that, and the applicant will be asking for approval, and I figure the neighborhood will be here also speaking in opposition with that, so I just wanted to prepare you for that.
Do you think you want to let Chief Brown know that we may have a contentious hearing, or do you think it'll be civil?
I was hoping, yeah, I hope they're not, we need to have police escorts. No, I don't think it'll be like that, I hope not.
It's not Walmart.
There was a large attendance at the citizen review meeting, but, and obviously major concerns, but the neighborhood conducted themselves very well, so I wouldn't anticipate.
Yeah. We'll carry guns that night. And then a couple of things, at the Arizona Planning Association Annual Conference was last week, November 7th, 8th, and 9th in Glendale, a few of you attended several of the sessions, I just want to let you know, at the awards luncheon, Goodyear received the award for the best project, the City Center Master Plan, and I don't know whether you know this or not, we also received an award from Valley Forward in September, that was an award of merit for the same City Center Master Plan, so it's an award-winning plan, and this council and the staff are looking forward to implementing the plan here fairly soon, so I'll let you know that. This is, also represents the third year in a row that the city of Goodyear has received a top award from the APA, which I think speaks well for us, I think we've done it, yeah, we missed a couple of years there before that, but three years in a row now. That's a distinction not a lot of cities have. Another thing, the Department of Commerce workshop, I just want to remind you, that's I think this, December 7, and I believe Commissioners Williams and Miller have signed up for that in Phoenix, I think, so just want to remind you of that. If anybody else wants to go, I don't know if it's too late or not.
You're going to be out of time. That's a good one.
Otherwise, is there anything else? Let me see.
I have one thing, I want to make a comment. This was the first year in my history that staff actually invited the planning commission to attend the APA conference, and I want to thank you for doing that, because I got to go for two days, or a day and a half, and I actually learned some stuff, and I also found some new work for Planning Manager Bob Coons to work on.
Yeah.
Also as a result of that, so...
You didn't hear that.
So anyway, so I want to encourage you to send us again next year, you know, wherever it is.
It's in Yuma.
It's in Yuma, well, you know, we can share rooms, Harvey, you know, I mean, it's just drive down for the, for days, you know.
But how we doing this, Dean?
Anyway, I appreciate it, it was a good deal, and I would, happy to go again.
It was, I just want to let you know, it was probably the most successful, I've been, well, I've been doing this in Arizona for, what, over 17 years, it was the most successful APA conference we've had in the state. We had over 465, around 465 registered for the conference, I don't know, over 100 people did the, close to 100 people did the mobile workshops. It was the most attendance that we've ever had in some of the sessions.
There were four commissioners that were there.
Yeah, and so we, we got a lot of good feedback from the conference, the sessions and the whole conference, and the facilities were outstanding, so...
Is that annual, or is that every other year?
It's annual, and we move it around the state.
So in three or four years, when we get some hotels up the road here, we could maybe try to have it here in Goodyear.
That's correct, we could.
So work it into the budget for next year, Harvey, for us to go?
Okay, I will.
Motion adjourned.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Motion adjourned.